What's going on, Chums? John John the Wise is here. You are watching another episode of Night City Council, and I am here with the illustrious mayor of Balanced Town himself, James Hutt. How are you, James?
I'm doing great. I'm very, very happy to be here. Black Chrome is out. The world is saved. Everything is good.
Yeah, man, this is a man amazing time for Cyberpunk Red. The book is one of those books that will go down in its history as being a pivotal point because of all the amazing content it's given us. So before we get into our new DLC, which is Black Chrome Plus Extra Content or Black Chrome, and before we answer some questions from the community, I wanted to talk to you, James, about any insight you can give us into the development of Black Chrome, its significance, everything. Give it all, spill it.
Design has been going on for a long time because not only do we need to figure out all of the cool stuff, we also had to figure out how we wanted to do a Chromebook and how we wanted to, you know, do it justice to the Chromebooks of the 2020s, you know. Personally, they're my favorite 2020 book. So it's, it took a while, and the book has so much art in it.
Yeah, it does.
Every item has art, almost.
Every item has a story, every item has art, every item has fun rules, it has combinations, they all work with each other, work with other things. It's just, it's exactly what you would expect from a Black Chromebook as somebody that played 2020. So how much of the 2020 book influenced Black Chrome? How much of it were you like, alright, we gotta modernize part of this? What's, what's the deal with that, with the ratio of it?
I don't, I'm not sure those are concepts that are fighting each other, but I would definitely say that this Black Chrome is an evolution of the 2020 Chromebooks because times have changed. We wanted it to be an in-world artifact. Oh, that's the other cool part. Black Chrome is entirely itself an in-universe artifact. It's the Chromebook, which is an app that you get downloaded on your phone when you go to a night market, and it just lists everything that's for sale there, you know. And it's sort of the way that the pages are framed, it's sort of presented like that. And of course, if you get the digital version, it's all beautifully hyperlinked. You can click almost anything that you'd want to click, and it will take you to the place where you'd like to go. Not just like little things like, tell me about this item. Also, like, on the top of the, on the top of each page, there's like a navigation bar because you're in an app. As you flip through the pages, your cart icon at the bottom goes up, and that's how we do the page number. And of course, as you flip through the pages, the battery goes down on your device, which I just adored. Anyway, that's, I don't even remember your question. I'm just so happy this book is out.
You're answering it, you're answering it because the 2020 book felt like a magazine, basically, and that's like appropriate for the time, you know, 90s. You know, what's a magazine nowadays? You know what I mean? And yeah, so I mean, they exist, of course, they're awesome. But you know, apps are a big thing in our culture, and the thing about what makes an app work is its utility. It's like it's in your pocket, it's in your hand, and you could just interact with it right away. So the dark future having its version of that, it totally makes sense in lore. It looks like it, you're going through the pages, you're going through all the items, and it honestly feels like you're using an app too. Because you likely already have like your Cyberpunk Red character, he's already decked out, they're, they got all the bells and whistles, and then this new app drops called the Chromebook, and you look in your agent, and there's all these cool little goodies you can get.
I see, I see, you think that.
And is that, is it supposed to feel like you're at a night market exclusively, or is it not only a night market?
So the Chromebook app itself is kind of more Craigslist-y in that way. You, you show up to a night market, and they give you, they, you're like, okay, here's the access code and whatnot, and here's the app on your phone. And it's just a way of keeping track of the stuff at that market. For the fixer, it lets them know what sold and what didn't, and you know what I mean? There are several reasons why they'd want to do it too. Especially if you're in like a secondhand, you know, trading or trading idea. You would need to in order to not just have people constantly window shopping every booth in that type of environment. Because I would imagine at a night market, you also want to do a little carousing, you also want to talk to people, you're not just there to buy stuff. It's an invite-only gathering after all. There are people that you'd want to talk to at a night market too. And I, I understand that this was a, this was like a layup question, John John, I'm getting to it. In the back of it, every item that you can get in the front of the app is put into a specific place on a map of, I believe there are four or five night markets listed in the back, each with characters detailed out. This is what you can get at this booth. So we are part of the, the evolution was getting it into the night market and into 2045, what you'd be doing as, as opposed to what you'd be doing in 2020, which is online shop.
Yeah, yeah, you got Woodchipper's Block Party, you got Three Piece, you got a bunch of them. There's, it's a whole story, it's a map, everything. Even stats for the specific fixer that's running the night market too, just in case you need a flatline.
It's like a mini, it's like a mini Wildside on the back, in the back of a Chromebook, what more do you want?
Yeah, yeah. And it, it answers that question of a GM saying like, oh, I want to make a night market, but I'm not exactly sure how to put it together. It's like, here's a bunch of examples, and you can either use them or make your own based on these. So it's good stuff. So Black Chrome has it all, man. So, so it's wrapped up, it came together, it's released. What's next for the Chrome universe that you can say?
The Chrome universe?
Yeah, yeah, isn't there supposed to?
I, I, look, I can't say anything in terms of dates or whatnot, and who, who knows? But I could say that it would be very weird if that was the only Chromebook to ever come out for Cyberpunk Red. Of course, we're looking at doing another one. Terms of dates, ideas, all that stuff, can't talk about that.
I just wanted to put it out there.
Let it have its moment in the sun.
Exactly. You know, that's like where the first, that's how it always goes. You release something and it's good, and then people are like, what's next? What's the next good thing?
Let it, let it live, let it live. In terms of, just in general though, that answer is Danger Gal dossier. And I have a, I have a bit of a, a bit of news from that book's development to share with you. Maybe, maybe later, maybe we can wait a little bit. Do you make them wait?
Yeah, let's finish the Black Chrome. That's a nice little teaser, see? There you go. It'll be in the title too, and people will be like, wait, they didn't talk about that in the beginning. So we'll finish Black Chrome because there is Black Chrome Plus. It is extra content for Black Chrome. So let's talk about that, you know. Obviously, you guys can purchase Black Chrome at our ArtelSorionGames.com. You can also get a drive-through RPG. And if you buy it from a brick and mortar store, I, you can preorder it right now. I already did one at mine. It should be coming to them really, you know, within the next few weeks. And you can also get a Bits and Mortar PDF. If they're part of that Bits and Mortar program, you buy the physical copy and you get a free PDF that they generate, and you just go download it. So you get two for one.
You're doing all my shilling for me, John John. I appreciate that.
Well, it works. I do it. I went to my shop, I got him to sign up to the Bits and Mortar, and I do the Bits and Mortar, so he gave me the stuff. So it's good stuff. Alright, so talk to me about Black Chrome Plus, James. What is the intention of its inclusion in our universe?
So Black Chrome Plus is a, we had all these ideas when we were making this book, right? And we had extras, and we didn't want to leave them in the, you know, leave them in the, the background. Some of them, we just wanted to, you know, give to the people honestly for free, honestly as a teaser. But, I mean, if you like Black Chrome Plus and you haven't owned, you don't own Black Chrome, you I don't know, think about that. Just put it in your head. More of there and there. And what Black Chrome Plus really is, is it's Molly's Fixer Spotlight DLC. You know, we've had several of these come up where the fixer is the main character in DLC, and they get to, you get a story with them, and then you get items from their perspective. Here we have a, it's an interesting inversion of that where we're not getting Molly directly taking you around their night market. We're getting Molly assigning you one of the Andersons to take you around their night market, which is kind of meant as a, just a fun, funny send-up to the idea that at, at Woodchipper's garage, Woodchipper is personally trying to sell you these things. Here, it's just a squeaky teenager who's kind of frightened by the level of violence on display and, but also, you know, wants to sell you these things, and will tell you about how fun it is to hunt rats with one of them. And I, I think it, it's a little bit of, I'm trying to do character building in it for the Andersons as a gang as well. So it's trying to serve, serve double duty as Molly's, Molly's one-page story. And here's what the Andersons kind of operate like as a gang.
Yeah, if you go to page 140 on the, in Chrome, Black Chrome, that's where you'll find Molly Anderson's Market. You have her stats right there, her whole stat block is on the next page over, and there's a map of that beautiful area as well. So you can use this in addition to that, the storyline as far as that goes, you know, that could be a whole storyline that you decide to explore. And that's what this DLC is wrapped up in, right?
Yeah. But it's also got kind of really big-ticket red meat items in there. The Molotov cocktail is statted out. For example, there's several ammunition variants, I believe, statted out. There's some pretty cool stuff in there, including a Hello Cutie item. We, we know you like them. There's one sprinkled in there. And again, while Black Chrome may be a great investment that I hope you make, Black Chrome Plus is free, and it is at ArtelSorionGames.com in the downloads area. And so, please, take a look.
Just like every wonderful DLC that ArtelSorion makes, this one is free. And you can get it at their website. The link will be in the description below as well because I love the community and I want to help them as much as I can, make it easy for them, James.
Save them clicking in some of their, save them typing it in.
Life's too short to be clicking all over the place, alright?
While you're there, like the video, you know, just, there's an idea, there's an idea.
If you're so kind as to do that, you know, I appreciate that too.
He gave you a URL.
That's it. I gave you a link. Give me one of these guys, the ups, the thumbs ups, alright? It helps. Uh, let's talk about some of the stuff because it's really cool. I love the bullet-to slug adapter casing. What is the, what's the idea behind this?
The idea behind this is that some of these items are for, in Molly's market are for this idea of like, what if I wanted to play Cyberpunk Red, but I wanted to play really street-level characters? They're doing really street-level stuff with very low access to money. And this is the type of thing that you would use if you were scrounging for bullets, if you were dealing with a lot of found ammunition, like ammunition you picked off of somebody you just shot. It's probably not for your gun. But this lets you essentially use that ammunition in a particular way. I believe it turns bullets into slugs for a shotgun, correct?
That's right. Yep. So does that mean, I believe there are some instances where you have special ammo and bullet form, but they don't come in slug form. Is that also what this was intended for?
I think that also works as well.
There you go.
I think, I don't have the stat block in front of me. It is very intentionally written. If it says only basic ammo, I meant only basic ammo, but you know, maybe your tech thinks otherwise.
Loading 10 bullets into adapter casings can be done as an action, a single bullet into an adapter. Yeah, it doesn't say basic ammo.
Now, that means anything, doesn't it?
Yeah. There you go.
There you go.
Alright.
Guess this means rubber is now available. I, I think we put rubber slugs in the second printing of the book because we forgot. And this lets people of the first printing of the book think like it was their idea. Fair enough.
Look at you.
The viewer.
The kid view, the viewer. Uh, there's also some, a couple other types of ammunition. There's junk ammunition, small game ammunition. These are also along the same vein of being like, you know, street-level items. But the other thing this does is it gives us an in-game economy for, for junk items. You know, you might come along in your campaign as a game master, and maybe you have a party that's loot crazy. You can go like, yeah, okay, there's a case of junk ammunition and small game ammunition. If you want to lug it around to sell it, go for it, you know? But it gives you the idea of how to have a hierarchy.
It's also very much a tool for the game master to nerf specific NPCs you're sending at your party, perhaps in interesting ways. It's a fun tool to build with as well. Especially if you're worried about giving your players a bunch of money.
Yeah. One of the best weapons, and I mean best as in it adds so much to the game story-wise, is the Big Dream. It's a 10 Eddie's exotic SMG, 10 Eddie's, guys. So I know what you chums are thinking. You're like, oh, okay, how bad can it be? You know, it, you're right, it's not bad, it's great. It fires 30 rounds of basic ammunition. It only autofires, and it, it shoots whether you let off the trigger or not. Once you pull that trigger, it is firing for the next three turns, right? And let's say you flatline the person that's using this gun, the gun falls to the ground and has a mind of its own and just starts shooting at the GM's discretion at the skill base of 10, so 1d10 plus 10, autofire against just random people in the, in the combat scenario. That's fun.
You can, you can throw it. You can fire the gun and then throw it, and it will keep going.
That's
I believe, uh, if there's any TimeSplitters pants, it's, it is somewhat based off of a dream I had about a TimeSplitters gun. I think it might have had a banana involved. I don't remember fully, but here it is, outside of my head.
Yeah, the, in Borderlands, that's a big thing. When you reload a weapon, you throw it, it blows up. There's some that like shoot in different directions too. Borderlands is a wild game.
It's fun.
Yeah. So moving on, like you said, we have the Sanru Hello Kitty, or Hello Cutie, sorry, excuse me.
Cutie.
Hello Cutie.
Please. Do not shit that wrong.
No, it's not, it's not that. What did I say? It's Hello Cutie.
I don't want that smoke.
The one true, the one true love. It's an exotic sniper rifle with a flip-out agent and built-in sniper scope and infrared night vision. The agent cannot be removed from the weapon without destroying both it and the weapon beyond repair. Despite being an exotic weapon, it can still load non-basic ammunition. Ooh, that's big. What's the idea between this?
You're faring the lead.
Why, I, do you want me to read?
You didn't mention, you didn't mention that it had inside of it a pseudo-AI girlfriend.
Did I miss that?
Yeah. You mentioned the wa, you missed the waifu in the rifle.
Oh, that's the next paragraph. "Installed in the agent is a pseudo-AI girlfriend with a randomly generated personality. Through a bone conduction speaker on the weapon's cheek rest, the girlfriend whispers messages of affirmation to its wielder and learns to recognize them even in a pitch-black darkness by the contour of their face." Alright, okay, okay. Once it gets to know a user via working with them to score 10 kills scored. Okay, so you score, you kill 10, you have 10 kills, then it gets to know you, it bonds with you, dynamically adjusting their shooting patterns, and becomes an excellent quality weapon. So you get a plus one to hit after 10 kills.
You do get a plus one hit after 10 kills. However,
That's so cool.
It is only, you only get the plus one after that point if the gun is not mad at you for some reason.
Yeah, such as by damaging it, not firing it enough, failing to clean it, loading it with junk ammo. Why would you do that? That's disrespectful. Or firing other sniper rifles. It may turn off this dynamic adjustment in protest until the user makes amends. So it's a, it's a relationship.
Yeah, you're getting into a relationship with a sniper rifle when you buy this.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I believe the term is committed, but what is the term used in there? It believes after 10 kills? Read that sentence, it's a fantastic sentence.
It says, tends, the pseudo-AI bonds to them, dynamic bonds. It bonds to dynamically adjusting to their shooting patterns and causing the weapon to act as an excellent quality when used. It bonds to you. You can't break that bond. Yeah, you break that bond, you're gonna have, you're gonna have problems.
Fair enough.
I love, I love that it's
That I wrote considers you to be in a serious committed relationship in the previous.
You know, that might have not made the, through the editing.
Oh, that might not have made the edit. Oh no. Well, I liked it, Jay.
Well, you know, it's homebrew.
Fair enough. Anyway, yeah, that's, that's the, that's one of the stars in there. For sure.
Yeah.
And, you know, of course, it's releasing a DLC on the same day as a full product is partially because, god, look. Listener, I know that you know that there are free DLCs on our website, but not everybody does, and you gotta keep telling them.
Yeah, they're the beautiful price of free. And of course, like you said, there is the Molotov cocktail. It's 20 Eddie's, it's an everyday item, 20 Eddie's. It's an incendiary grenade that deals 5d6 damage. While it's being carried by a character, if that unlucky chumba takes any damage that penetrates their armor, all Molotov cocktails on their person have a 50% chance of being destroyed beyond repair. Alright, so that's, you know, on a d6, it's 1, 2, 3, or 4, 5, 6, you guys decide. If that happens, it doesn't explode, but does set the chumba deadly on fire, which is the worst fire. I think it's 4 damage? Or is it 5?
I, I think it's more than that.
It's CPR page 180.
2, 4, 2, 4, then a higher one. I don't remember.
It could be. Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but deadly, it's the, it's the worst one.
Yeah.
And destroys beyond repair. So yeah, it's risky business getting shot while that thing is in your hand. So.
Great weapon for a game master to use on you. Cheeky weapon for you to use on a game master.
Well, you know, 5d6
You're in a fight with the game master or anything.
Exactly. But I mean, a 5d6 grenade for 20 Eddie's is, is a pretty big swing, you know what I mean?
Hey, you might not be able to pass that up.
Yeah, it's, I understand. So other than that, there's some other cool stuff. There's Molly's Armor, a new street drug called Piranha Smash. And that's really interesting. But why don't we talk about the one thing that, when you messaged me about it, I thought you were joking, and you said you're not, I'm not joking. We did do this. A solo-of-fortune body pillow. Body pillows?
We like to have fun here.
Yeah, it's, I love it. These are collector's items, I guess because these people were famous in ancient times. The metal guy's kind of hot if you're into that sort of thing. What is that a reference to?
The metal guy?
Yeah.
There's only one of those. You didn't read the list before it. Of the, doesn't it list it's available in Morgan Blackhand?
I, oh, it didn't. Oh, it's in the bottom. It got moved to the bottom. So it's, it's the next paragraph over. "Body pillows featuring images of famous solos from the 2020 era." There we go. "Including Morgan Blackhand, Boa Boa Wayland, and Atom Smasher. Most of the body pillows are 20 inches by 54 inches." The centimeter scale for you guys there too. "But the Atom Smasher model is so large, it reduces the number of people a housing option is capable of comfortable hosting by one."
Right, so you can buy multiple Atom Smasher body pillows to make your house so uncomfortable that no one could.
I love that there's a mechanical way of reducing the, the capable, capability of housing of an, of a housing thing by one because of this body pillow.
Yeah, well, again, we like to have fun here, and sometimes it's fun to put in a joke item here and there.
And, and it's 100 Eddie's, which is a lot.
It's a collector's item.
It's, it's, that's an expensive hobby.
Some may say it's an investment.
It is, yeah, exactly. Just lightly-used Atom Smasher body pillow. That's fun. Then there's a really nice map there to be used as a night market. So that's, that's cool. It's like a little parking lot, great for using.
I believe there's a, there's also a guide for like what the different, some of images that are, this is what this fashion style might look like. This is what this fashion style might look like.
Yep.
This is, and then there's a bit in the back about linear frames. What do they look like? A lot of people have questions about that, so this DLC has some answers for you.
Yeah, if you ever wanted to know what does Bag Lady Chic look like, it's two images for each style displaying what they look like. So this is great for your players that want to get immersed in the game, and they're at the fashion area of their character creation. You can tell them like, these are, this is what it looks like. Do you want to basically be this style? And then linear frames, obviously, that way you can tell what a character looks like in a frame, you know, how big they're gonna look and all that. There's also some really good maps, a bunch of maps, and then NPC tokens at the end as well that you can use.
Those are good for
We got that K-Tech Dobberman. We got a bunch of those in there too, if you want to pop those out. Maybe print them on cardstock, pop them out. There you go. So yeah, very cool DLC. The DLC is jam-packed with content.
We, we tried to, we, we know that people are gonna be, we know that people are gonna come back to the game, right? That we're like, oh, I'll wait for Black Chrome. Well, now they're back, right? So we wanted to make sure to invite them back in with a larger offering. I will say, there's a, this is just a, just a tip. Those circular pawns in the back of that, basically any of them from a VTT. You can print those out at quarter size and get coin capsules. Cut them into little circles and put them on both sides of a quarter, squish it all together, and you can take that VTT thing into your physical game as well.
Yeah, and because of the quarter, the quarter gives it a nice heft too. I like that.
Yeah, that's a, that's just a tip for me.
Yeah, it's good. I like that too. Great idea. Alright, so that's it for Black Chrome. I'm sure that most of you chums have already purchased it or looked at it. If you haven't, you're missing out on a lot of content, so get out there and get your copy. Now let's talk about Danger Girl's dossier.
Danger Gal dossier, yeah.
Danger Gal's dossier. Let's, let's hear it, man. What, what's going on?
Alright, so I have, I have some confirmations on the different, some of the different gangs and factions that are gonna be in this book. So let me just scoot to my note file.
Send me any images that you have, if you can, if you can share them.
I, I don't have that right now.
No, no, whenever you can, if they exist, so I can use it for the video, if it's okay.
Fair enough. I'll mention that to Jay. Alright, so in Danger Gal dossier, there are sections detailing some of the individual members of some of these popular factions. Here's just a Of some of these uh, popular factions. Here's just a list. Um, start off Maelstrom. I have some Maelstrom members. A lot of them you've never seen before. Um, this is great for if you're having trouble figuring out. Who are these Maelstrom people in the time period and you wanna add more characterization to them? Or you want them to be, you know, larger NPCs in your campaign? Another cool one, Tiger Claws. We're gonna have the Tiger Claws in there. So you'll be able to, you know, meet, interact with Tiger Claws members, know who they are. Individually, uh, not all of them again, um, but a fair chunk of them. We have, uh, this is a pretty cool lore one. We have the precursor to what becomes sixth grade in twenty seventy seven. Uh, Guardians. And we have the Piranhas. Uh, which is cool. I will talk more about the Piranhas in a little bit, actually. I have another thing to talk about, about them. Uh, and uh, the NCPD is gonna get more um. Characters for you to interact with, which is great if you're a lawman, uh, or no one. Uh. That way you know who your coworkers are finally. I think you've just been, you know. GMing, homebrewing that in up until now, but now you got it. Well, you will. Um, Trauma Team, similar, for similar reasons for the MedTech, very exciting. And uh, Network Fifty Four. Medtech, uh, sorry, blarf. Um, Network Fifty Four for the media. Um, for similar, good stuff.
So it sounds like uh, this supplement.
A general confirmation for people who are wondering what actually is gonna be in this book.
So it's a supplement that, that's basically like a gang book? A faction book?
Faction book. I'd like to think of it as kind of like a monster manual uh, for uh, Cyberpunk Red. Um, and um, we're targeting this year for it.
Awesome, awesome.
I will tell you closer when we know closer.
Yeah, that's really cool. Uh, I'm excited.
Been in development for a while already.
I'm looking forward to that because that's uh, it can round out a lot of campaigns. It can fill out a lot of gaps. And it's a great toolbox for game masters. Just pop them out at any time. There's life, there's story, there's stats. Just pop them out at any time, right?
Yep, um, they're great for sprinkling in amidst the, you know, standard MOOCs and stuff that you're used to. Uh, in games to keep the world feeling alive. Um, there are plenty of great reasons to use MOOCs, but there are also plenty of great reasons to mix it up from time to time. And we, we understand that that can take a lot of work as a, as a GM. And so, of course, not only is the book. Full uh, going to be, you know, full of awesome, cool NPCs. It's also full of their stories. Uh, and there's plenty of adventure hook implications in there and honestly, it's a lore book too.
Yeah.
Um, just like Black Chrome is also a lore book.
Yep.
Uh, this next one, same deal.
Well, you guys do a good job of seamlessly making the lore part of the game mechanics like all in one. That's like a big cyberpunk staple. Especially when you look at like the, like all the supplements throughout time, the twenty twenty Chrome books even. There's like beautiful text, beautiful image, explaining everything, and then these are the rules. For this thing as well. So it's like, it gives you everything all in one. I've always appreciated that. Um, anything else?
I mean, that's what, that's what I've got to share today.
We appreciate it. We like it a lot. So why don't we answer some questions? We do have some uh, Black Chrome questions as well. So.
Awesome, let's answer those.
In, uh, let's see here. Okay, here we go. So this is from Panfei, AKA Perry. They wanna know, what is the difference between a persuasion skill and the rocker boy's charismatic impact? As both of them influence people? Also, what other ways do you think you can use charismatic impact other than the example stated in the core rulebook? Give me your thoughts on that while I look up the uh. The um, the core rulebook.
Okay, um, I would say persuasion skill is a, just a generalized. Um, is a more generalized skill. Okay, uh, sorry about that. My laptop ran out of uh, battery. So you're on my phone now.
No worries.
Yeah, they, they tried to shut down the feed. They can't shut down the feed.
No, they can't.
We got a backup. Um, so to get to the question.
Yeah, I was gonna just look up charismatic.
A persuasion skill, the persuasion skills, uh, is used for just general persuading people. Um, it's um, it doesn't have specific defined powers. Like the rocker boy's charismatic impact does. Um, because the rock boys charismatic impact is used for um. Is used for a very specific type of um. Impact on a, on a group or individual. It's like the power of stardom, kind of. Um, and influence, uh, and that level. I would say that a rocker boy should have both. Um. Uh, it would be interesting, just as interesting though, to do uh, to play Rock Boy that only had one, not the other, right? Rock Boy without persuasion. Um. But um. The, the answer to what can charismatic impact do that isn't sort of fully stated out in the rules? Um, is, that's a, that's a in general ask your GM answer. Um, if you are the GM, I would consider uh, like, and you have a rocker boy in your group. I would consider making sure to keep that in mind, so that you can build in interesting things for charismatic impact to do. And um, it's uh, it's kind of on, uh, that's kind of on the GM, I think.
Yeah. And it also states here in the rules, uh, that this rule is specifically for fans of the rocker boy. So that's a big difference in how people interact with the rocker boy. You know, persuading somebody is one thing, but persuading when they're your fan is a different thing. A fan. Might go that extra mile that a logical person that just met you wouldn't go to.
Right.
You know?
That's, and um. Just piggybacking on that, uh, it gives you that, it can give you that idea of um. What if I didn't have a very high persuasion uh, skill, but I was a rocker boy? Maybe you can only, you're only, if people don't know you, then no, they wouldn't wanna do anything for you. You know, no, they wouldn't list you for any reason, but if they know you're like, oh wait, aren't you? Oh my god.
Yeah, yeah, there's a line that you don't cross, you know, like when you just meet somebody. Even if you think they're a funny person and charismatic and ha ha he he, like. A bouncer might let you through the club, but a fan will give you VIP access. You know, he'll put his job on the line to do a little bit extra for you, you know?
It's true, um, a lot of times, uh. I get, I see like questions like, gosh, should I let this roll ability do that? And the answer is with roll abilities, they're like the, um, the holiest of holies. Um, in terms of rules wise in the um. In the game, uh, so the answer is almost always yes, you should privilege the player's roll ability. Um, because that's what makes them that role and. Uh, I mean, that's kind of why they're playing that and not a solo.
There you go. Alright, so next question. Do the special abilities of armor such as the fire immunity and oxygen tank of Firebrand bunker gear? Or the ability to shock your grabber while wearing the Gibson Battle Gear Shock Armor? Stop working when the armor reaches a zero SP or AKA is destroyed? This is from Dusk.
So when they reach zero HP, they're not destroyed. Um, they're just useless for the, for the purpose of stopping bullets, AKA stopping power SP. Um, I would say if they are destroyed, uh, yeah, they stop working, but. There you go.
Yeah.
Uh, you could also, they count, a lot of them count as EMP-able. Um, so that would be the second half of the feature would turn off. Um, obviously, the, the shock armor itself would not cease to be armor because it got EMPed. Um, so there's, there's an interaction there as well.
There you go. So zero SP or destroyed, i- is zero SP the same as destroyed or is that?
No, zero SP is not the same as destroyed. Zero SP means that the armor can no longer stop. It can no longer reduce the incoming effects of damage. It does not mean the item is destroyed. It just means it's useless for the purpose of. The incoming effects of damage.
It has no stopping power. That doesn't mean it's destroyed.
Yeah.
Yeah, got it. Okay, so do, being destroyed is a GM discretion kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
Um, typically though, if you have a really heavy mallet and an undefended item, you can totally destroy a thing. That's, that's why it's GM fiat. It's because.
Yeah, but I get it cuz it can be argued that it has zero SP, but the armor is still intact, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It can still be argued. Okay, uh, this is from three people in one question. I'm included. Nyliss, Raf and I have a question for you, James. How do you determine damage taken for jumping or being tossed out of a moving vehicle? It's a head scratcher, huh?
I mean. Um, falling out of a moving vehicle or is there?
There's falling rules, so there's rules.
There's falling rules, so.
I mean, but it's not like a one-to-one thing, you know what I mean? Uh, you can make it a one-to-one. I guess like how far you tumble out of the vehicle, but that's just speculation on our part.
I mean, it depends on, i- it kinda depends on how fast you were going also. Uh, there is specifically no rule for that. There are um. Okay, there are direct guidelines in that area, but they are basically fiat. Um, meaning if the fall is obviously lethal, then it is obviously lethal.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Anything under than that, um, you get to decide. GM wise, uh, you could call it like a crash. Essentially, um, you could have them make a roll and if they fail the roll, they can get a critical injury. Um, and take some damage. Um. Maybe you could, i- this is a, these are all answers that you could propose, but it is a very edge case thing to have happen.
Yeah.
Uh, in general, um, we. Because of that, there is no direct rule.
Yeah, it's one of those things like the racer bracer from Black Chrome. That like solved the, oh, I wanna run people over with my car, but I don't wanna get a critical injury for it. That solved that. And now there's like situations where my players are like wrestling a guy in the back of a truck or something and. Or you hijack a vehicle, jump from a motorcycle onto a vehicle and hijack it, you know?
Cool.
Fast and Furious stuff.
I mean, that, that all sounds great. Uh, it, it just seems like, um, if you're in a moving car thing and a mooc gets thrown. Out of the situation, then just might as well just forget about them and keep going.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the moocs.
And if a player gets thrown, you guys, GM gets to decide, oh, am I gonna make this? How am I gonna do this? Is it action movie enough for them to like get to grab on the side or am I gonna, are they really getting thrown? If they're really getting thrown, you have to think about as a game master, is the other, are the other people in the party still on the train? Cuz you also kinda don't wanna consign someone to a pizza break.
Yeah, it's a tough situation. That, it's definitely one of those tough situations where like if you kill a character. With your GM rule, it might logically make sense, but it's, it's a feel bad because it's a homebrew thing that you introduced, you know?
Yeah, I, I mean, the most here is, that I would do is, me personally, on my table. You got thrown off of the vehicle, right? Well, you're taking damage from the throw. Um, and then. I'm probably gonna say, okay, you're prone. You're obviously prone unless you can make a athletics check. Um, if they're getting thrown off a cliff, it's obviously different. But I'm talking about sixty mile per hour out of a car, rolling tumble.
It's just enough, it's just enough where you can argue maybe you would be okay. Not okay as in you're not gonna take damage, but you're not gonna die. But off a cliff, it's like, it's gonna be hard to convince me that you survived that, you know?
I, I would say that you gotta, if you're throwing them off a cliff, they have to get the, the, the grab, the grab the side option.
Yeah, yeah.
Cuz throwing people off the cliff without that is like, that's, that's just so childish, man.
Yeah.
On, on a table, you're just gonna, you're just a dick at that point.
So hey, you know?
Do you though?
You do you, GM fiat, and hey, now it's out there. It's in James's head. Now when they're writing rules, who knows? We might see something later on down the road.
The whole point is it's not in my head. It's in your hands, game master.
There you go. Alright, uh, this is, let's do another Black Chrome one. This is from Abagor. With new apps available for the agent from Black Chrome page eleven. Are there any limitations when it comes uh, to using the internal agent? The Digital Gladiator mentions. That a loss would result in also receiving a brain critical injury. But would other apps require additional cyberware like a camera to use one, such as the Fortify or Trauma Team MedScan?
Um, I would say.
Basically, is there anything in the agent that isn't required? Or is, that is required?
For the internal agent, um. I mean, for the apps that need a source of like video. Uh, and if you don't have Cyber Eyes. Uh, there are plenty of ways to solve this up into it, including I plug an interface cable into a camera. Um, so as long as it has any way of working. It can work. Um, it's kind of more fun to, I don't know, focus on. Oh, how are you going to make this compatible instead of, those aren't compatible.
Yeah, and because a, a camera is like, uh, is something you can source anywhere. You don't need a fixer for a camera, so it's feasible that as you're purchasing. Certain apps, the GM could be like, yeah, you're not gonna just buy the thing and not buy the stuff that it needs to work, you know?
Right.
So like, throw it in there basically.
Yeah, I mean, if you have a Cyber Eye. It's a moot point. It can connect.
Make it work, yeah. If, if you don't have a Cyber Eye, then yeah, I get it. You need a camera? Okay, the GM says you got a camera.
Fair. If you add a smart lens, even that, it connects, it works. Oh, I'll plug into the security camera. It works. Anything works.
James gives you guys permission.
If I plug it, if I plug my interface plugs into another agent, still works.
There you go, okay. Um, alright, uh, this is from Sean GT. Is there any mechanics to gaining contacts as a fixer? Is it like one per level? Is it, in, is it numerous? Is it more of a narrative thing? What's the situation?
So, um, we have a, a part of the fixer role that sort of says, these are the type of people that you can talk to. Like, pretty easily, without, like, no sweat, right?
Yep, reach.
Um, and.
Or sorry, context.
Context, and it gets better as you gain um, ranks in the roll ability. Uh, I would say for those people, you got anything you want, you know? Um, there's uh, if you don't know them already, you can get to know them in game. Um, and of course, as you interact with NPCs, you're a fixer after all and. Keep track of those NPCs. Oh, I remember I worked with this guy. Oh, we got drinks that one time. Um, that's all in your roleplay. Uh, in terms of the rules, the rules say you have a reach that can reach these people. And as I said before, uh, the roll abilities are the holiest of holies. Um, then should be privileged. Um, if you're trying to go above your reach, then that's a conversation you can have. They might, you might have to work for it. Um. Many examples.
So I guess the question, so just looking at the rules, it says operator rank one and two, contacts and clients. It says local honcho, gang lord, local neighborhood leadership. So the question is, does that mean I have three contacts, one in each of those categories? Or are those just examples of the many contacts I can have at that level?
Those are examples of the type of people that will open, that will pick up the phone when you call them. Uh, will they pick up the phone? Uh, will they pick up the phone and say, we've been friends forever? Probably not. Um, having a company in your contact list does not mean having an existing business relationship with them. Um, but you know, people answer their phone in Night City. It's one of the, one of the great fantasies of the, uh, of the, of the game is that you could call someone and they'd answer. Um, but you have the, the idea is that you have the reach enough that you would be able to get in touch with them, right? Um, and that's important because we don't have that, then we're going to have a bunch of like, I don't know who I can even call. Um, a fixer played by somebody who's like, okay, I want to call somebody like this. I want to look somebody up on the data pool and then I want to give them a phone call. Uh, that is a powerful, powerful fixer indeed. It's a powerful way to play fixer and that part of the roll ability is to give you that narrative power.
There you go. Uh, all right, this next question is from Abagor as well. Uh, I'm going to have to look up, thank you for the page numbers, by the way, because then we can actually look, look this up. So can a tech jury rig subdermal armor, Chromebook 147, let me go there real quick. Chromebook 147. Okay. Uh, no, oh, core book. That's why it says CB.
Yeah, um, the, the answer there is yes.
Okay, so, uh, and bring it up to full SP?
Temporarily, yes.
Okay, so does that, does that mean you can have three health bars by bringing it up to full SP and then using the trauma response nanomatrix from Black Chrome? Do it again.
Sure. By the way, you can also just install multiples of the nanomatrix if you feel so inclined. You could get enough nanomatrixes that you can just keep saying nano machine sun and having your skin turn black.
Jesus, that's wild, man. That's pretty cool. All right, uh, let's do a couple more here. What do material costs represent for techs and med techs if material costs are at 500 EDS or higher? Are fixers absolutely required for techs to use their roll ability? This is from Angel Cruz.
Uh, so materials valued at this amount means that the materials themselves are as a batch that price category. Um, this means that if you're at the 500 price category, those materials are harder to source for you. You will have to go through a fixer. However, no one said that you couldn't fabricate 500 EB of materials from a hundred EB with a separate action as the tech.
There you go.
Of course, that would take a long time. And I guess that's there for if you're in the wilderness and have no access to a fixer and you gotta get it done and time is, you know, there's a constraint on your powers, but no, I broke into this abandoned garage and I found a hundred EB of materials and I'm going to turn it into 500 EB materials and then I'm gonna, so you can, yes, be Iron Man.
In the, in the cave?
In the cave with a box of scraps if you want.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense because you're, you're basically, you're taking the convenience of the fixer, which is what its intention is as a fixer to be convenient for you or, you know, inconveniencing yourself and making the material yourself.
Mm-hmm.
All right, there we go. Uh, let's see here. This is from Dalen Hamarian. Hello, John John and James. I'm quite new to, uh, Cyberpunk Red. I'm running my first campaign. I had a question for you and James about quick fix action in the field expertise tech roll ability. Can you fix a destroyed or seriously damaged vehicle with a quick fix and how to keep it logical in roleplay?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what quick fix does.
It's a wide net of what it can do, right?
It, it does basically anything, but the thing is it only does it temporarily. And after that, I believe you can't use it on the same thing for a while.
Yeah.
I think, read, read the section before quoting me on it, but.
Here, let me read it right now. I have it right here. Maker tech, uh, build repair. Upgrade expertise fabrication, build expertise. Uh, let's see, you add your ra- rank to the special ability to any basic tech, cyber tech, electronic security tech, weapons tech, any tech you make for any non-maker specialty purposes.
No, no, he means jury rig.
Does he mean jury rig?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He was saying jury rig.
Uh, rank one.
It's called, it's.
It's called jury rig.
It's called jury rig, right?
I believe whenever tech, I believe that's what field expertise is.
Oh, at the bottom, it says the jury rig text though.
Before you jury rigged it. Yeah, it's not in like special texts, but it's, it's field expertise and jury rig are synonymous with each other.
Okay.
Additionally, as long as you have at least one rank in the special, speciality, specialty, instead of attempting a lengthy full repair, you can elect to instead temporarily repair your target at the same DV of a tip typical repair for the item to perfect condition as an action with full SP and HP applicable. You add your rank and field expertise to this check. The jury rig holds for 10 minutes for each rank you have in this specialty. After which the item returns to its normal state it was in before you jury rigged it. Except that it cannot be jury rigged again until it has been fully repaired. So it's a 10 minute window, more than enough time for a combat encounter, uh, but not a lot of time. Um, narratively.
Mm-hmm. That, so, um, give you an idea of why that exists, just to go a little deeper on that. Number one, um, in an action will be when something breaks and there's a character that's often very representative of a tech in Cyberpunk Red, something's got to break, right? At the wrong time. Um, and then the tech goes over to it and just does something to it and then it, it works just enough to, for the heroes to succeed. That's what that is. That lets you be the guy fixing the plane while Indiana Jones is trying to not crash it. After they tapped the gas and realized that it was actually empty. Um, that's, that's what that's for. Um, and I will say there's one caveat. Uh, and it says you're still repairing it by doing this. So if the item in question is destroyed beyond repair, it's also destroyed beyond this.
Hmm.
So you cannot turn ashes into a tree. That's basically what that is. That's just, there is a, um, the real world intrudes on the action movie storytelling that this is there to create when you really can't fix it. Um, anyway, there's.
Yeah, there you go. Uh, yeah, and, and it's very important to know that it says in perfect condition. So that means the item will work exactly how it will, would have worked if it was in perfect condition. Uh, it's, it doesn't mean that it's worse than it was before or anything like that. But it's 10 minutes per rank. So you put a couple ranks in this, it's 20 minutes. Which can help in sometimes it can, and 10 minutes is not enough in other times. So that's why the points where you put them is very important in your roll ability.
Uh-huh.
So there it is. All right, that's it for that. We got a, if you guys have more questions, remember Tunes. John John the Wise at gmail dot com. Send me those questions. We'll add it to the list. And we'll answer them. Anything you want to tell the folks at home, James, before we sign out?
I do think I teased something about the piranhas earlier. And I didn't screw, circle back to it and I wouldn't want to leave it open.
Then let's do it.
So in upcoming DLC, there's going to be a little bit more piranha stuff. I just wanted to, people to get excited for it. It's coming out. Next, sometime in the next three DLCs.
Yeah, we're excited.
Yeah, I also have a, a bit of a, bit of a personal announcement.
Oh, let's hear it.
Uh, so, uh, depending on when this goes up, this, it might not be there yet, but, uh, I'm, uh, I have a new website, uh, jameshutgames.com. And, uh, there, all basically all that's there is a place to put in your email to join a newsletter um, about indie stuff that I do. Uh, you know, if you're this far into the video, you might be a fan of my work. And, uh, that's where I'm putting all the info for anything that I do that isn't tower related. Um, you know, join. And, uh, I promise not to spam you.
And there you go. We're happy to support the person that made our favorite game. I can only imagine, uh, or helped, helped make our favorite game, I should say. And, and, uh, I can imagine that, uh, that we're going to like everything that you do, James.
It turns, it turns, I appreciate that, John John. Um, if, it turns out if you're a fan of other games that I've worked on, you very well might be a fan of another thing I made. So would love to have you.
There you go.
Anyway, and, um, depending on when this comes up, that website might not be up yet, so. Try again next week if it's not.
Hopefully it will be up soon. That way, uh, you guys can sign up to that soon. Uh, uh, either way, you know, it's coming, it's happening and we'll be happy to report on it and talk about it as soon as, uh, we can. So thank you for that. Uh, other than that, Tunes, thank you so much for supporting Night City Council. Thank you so much for supporting our Telltale and Games. We all appreciate your kind support. Our community is growing with positivity. It's great to see. And write us in about your favorite games, things that you ran. We would love to talk about it too. That would be a nice little news segment. Where we talk about people's games, comment on them. Uh, you know, it doesn't always have to be like, what does this mechanic do? What does that mechanic do? We're happy to give our insight on anything that, that involves gaming, right?
Absolutely.
There you go. So for the mayor and I, the Night City Council is adjourned. We will see you guys on the next one. Thank you so much. Take care. Bye.